All right, everybody, I got seven o'clock. Let's call to order this regular city council meeting for the city of Troutdale, September 24th, 2024. If you would all rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Let's take roll call, Kendall, please.
Counselor Ripma.
Here.
Counselor Caswell.
Excused.
Counselor One.
Here.
Counselor White.
Here.
Counselor Wittrin.
Present.
Counselor Glance.
Yes, here.
Mayor Lauer.
Here. Mr. Ray Young, any agenda updates?
Mr. Mayor, I would do nothing to transform this agenda.
And I appreciate that. All right, let's move on to public comment. Agenda item number two, public comment on non-agenda consent agenda items is welcome at this time. Public comment on agenda items will be taken at the time the item is considered. Public comments should be directed to the presiding officer and limited to matters of community interest or related to matters which may or could come before council. Each speaker shall be limited to five minutes for each agenda item unless a different amount of time is allowed by the presiding officer with consent of the council. The council and mayor should avoid immediate or protracted responses to citizen comment. Let's go in council chambers tonight if anybody wishes to make public comment. All right. Anybody on Zoom wishes to make public comment, please unmute yourself and state your name and city of residence for the record. All right, not seeing anybody, I'm gonna go ahead and close public comment. Let's move on to agenda item number three, consent agenda. Counselor President Ripma, would you mind reading consent agenda?
All right, consent agenda. 3.1 minutes, August 27th, 2024, city council regular meeting and September 10th, 2024, city council regular meeting. 3.2, resolution, a resolution approving a public pedestrian at-grade crossing agreement with Union Pacific Railroad Company for the Sandy River Greenway Riverfront Trail and Park Project. And I move adoption.
Seconded by Counselor White. Kendall, let's take roll call, please, and thank you.
Counselor Wittrin?
Yes.
Counselor Glance?
Need to abstain, I wasn't there those two weeks.
Okay. Counselor Ripma?
Yes.
Counselor One?
Yes.
Mayor Lauer?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Uh, let's move on to agenda item number four, public hearing of an ordinance first introduced on September 10th, an ordinance amending Troutdale Municipal Code Section 13.20.410, establishing fines that may be imposed for violations of the Troutdale Municipal Code, Chapter 13.20. Public Works Director Travis Holtman, it's good seeing you.
You too. See Mr. Mayor, first of council. As you mentioned, this ordinance was introduced on September 10th, and a public hearing was held. The purpose of this ordinance is to add an additional enforcement tool to the parks code. At present, the parks code really only has one enforcement mechanism, and that is to eject someone from the park and to actually also exclude them from the park for a period of time. Not a super effective enforcement tool since we don't have the parks monitored constantly. And even if someone were ejected, we might not know if they come back. If they did, the worst thing we could do is kick them out again. They were already excluded, so not a huge motivator for people to comply with park rules. There is one other enforcement tool currently in the parks code, and that is the city can seize the property of someone who uses it in violation of a parks rule with some limitations when it comes to pets. So we did discuss some enforcement tools during the discussions of the parks code back in around the first of the year, when we're talking about allowing dogs in parks. And that language, that language was to not survive into the final ordinance, not because anybody objected, I think it was just a clerical error resulted in that not making it into the final ordinance. In the interim, staff discussed it and determined that what we presented you in this ordinance would probably be the most direct effective tool to have it at enforcement personnel's disposal. That tool would be authorizing people, any personnel that are, have the authority to enforce parks rules could issue to a citation with up to a $250 fine for violation of Chapter 13.20, which includes parks rules. And then prohibitive offenders, their defense, it could be up to $1,000. That's modeled pretty much, almost exactly off of the nuisance code. The penalties are in the nuisance code. The fines on the initial offenses are a little lower in this ordinance as compared to the nuisance code. So we did present this to you on the 10th. There weren't really much in the way of comments on the ordinance itself, and no testimony from the public, no objections from the public. So it's brought back to you tonight to consideration potential adoption. As far as procedure, you have basically four options. You can adopt the ordinance as proposed. You can adopt the ordinance this council meeting, but with your own amendments that someone could propose tonight and move and could be approved by the entire council. You could just reject the ordinance and say, no, we don't want to do this. Or you could, if you have something maybe a little more complex, a little tinkering you wanted us to do, want to go with it, you could direct staff to go back and do such tinkering as you might direct, bring it back at a later meeting for consideration. That will be have it answer any questions.
Any comments or questions from council before we go to the public hearing? Counselor White?
I had to ask a question if the park rules were going to be clearly posted in every park, and we're gonna do a little checking on that, or?
I haven't had a chance to follow up on that in the interim. That's not a part of this ordinance, but certainly it relates to this ordinance. And that's something, of course, we want to have people be aware of what parks rules are to the extent we can do so, to the extent practical.
I thought it might be a good idea as well to put the, like, the basic park rules in the champion so people are aware of it through that means.
Sure, I think we could do that. I mean, I'd want to look back over, you know, how long of a list that is and see if we want to maybe curate it down to some of the more common violations and overwhelm people with a long list. But I think it'd probably fit into a reasonably sized article.
They're pretty, pretty basic.
Yeah, they're not too complicated.
That's all I was looking for.
No murder.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, next month on October 8th, we're doing a follow-up on the change of the leash dogs in parks, and we'll add back to that presentation about the signage.
Okay.
So it's already on the agenda.
Counselor Wittrin?
And then I'd say make sure we add this, if this passes tonight, that we add this ordinance into that as well, that this is gonna be new and to expect it.
Yeah, I think we would certainly, you know, anytime we're gonna add something like this into the ordinance, into an ordinance, it's best to get that out, the word out to the public, let them know this is potentially what can happen if you're causing trouble.
We could wrap it all up in one article.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions from council?
A quick question.
Counselor Glance?
Has the menace rule ever been enforced with an actual fine?
Which rule is that? I'm sorry, Counselor Glance?
You said this was based off of the menace rule?
I'm sorry, that's the nuisance code is what I based it off.
Nuisance code, okay, has that ever been actually fined, anybody?
Oh, certainly, Joe Storage can speak to that better, he's the code compliance officer. But it's based on what I've picked up from, you know, I don't work with them directly on those issues very much, but certainly I'm sure I heard that he's issued many citations and notices in municipal court for nuisance violations.
Okay.
Yeah, if I could add, we do a lot of that, especially when people have garbage, accumulated garbage and debris in their yards, it's one of the defined nuisances. So we use it quite often to encourage people to keep their yards clean and their grass down.
Counselor White?
And who, so is our code enforcement, could it be the main enforcement tool? Or is this something the police could?
Yeah, I mean, the code enforcement officer doesn't have a lot of time to spend in parks. They're obviously enforcing a lot of nuisance stuff and parking issues. It takes up a lot of the code enforcement officers' time. The, at present, probably the most likely personnel to enforce this would be our contracted security personnel. So as you well know, Counselor White, as you proposed it, we did contracts in park security for this budget year. They did the day and night patrols throughout the summer, and they'll be doing night patrols through the winter. And this would give them another tool to do enforcement of some of the most common and prevalent parks violations.
Yeah, currently under the code, any law enforcement officer or city person or delegated person like security can issue tickets. That was the thing we wanted to make sure we could do with OSP, who did security, that they could issue tickets also.
And we still have Uncle McKinney Sheriff presence.
Of course, yeah, naturally they can do so as well, yeah.
Well, it's another reminder of how important our municipal court is. Because without that, I don't think you could even prosecute a lot of these petty crimes.
Oh, yeah, I mean, a lot of the lower-level ordinance violations would be very difficult to enforce or get compliance with without a municipal court that could handle those. I'm very thankful for all the work they do. Absolutely.
If there's no other comments or questions from council, I'm gonna go ahead and open up the public hearing. So the public hearing is open now on agenda item number four, an ordinance amending Troutdale Municipal Code Section 13.20.410, establishing fines that may be imposed for violations of Troutdale Municipal Code, Chapter 13.20. If you wish to make testimony regarding this agenda item, go ahead and, we'll start on Zoom. Go ahead and unmute yourself and state your name and city of residence for the record, please.
Mayor Lauer, Paul Wilcox, Troutdale.
Good evening, Paul, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I wanted to preface that my comments and observations are based on what I've observed at Sunrise Park, which happens to be the nearest park to us and our favorite, favorite go-to park. Couple items, I found that, well, what I've observed is the most common violation in Sunrise is off-leash dogs. And there's already a, what the county refers to as large dogs, which is off-leash dogs. There's a $150 fine for the first violation under county rules. So then you're adding a $250 fine for a city violation. So I don't know whether it would depend who's writing the violation, how much the fine would be, or who's doing the enforcement as far as loose dogs go. My other item is, went through the entire laundry list of violations, and at Sunrise, it's a paved path, as I'm sure most of you know, a fairly wide paved path. And in the, recently, it's become an issue with electrified transport, everything from e-bikes to e-scooters. I've seen a guy on a, what's described as a electric unicycle. It has a wheel, it's a wheel with pegs on it. And he was all outfitted like he was a football player with pads and the helmet and everything. And he was well protected, but I don't know about the people he might run into. So what I'm saying is, there's nothing in the regulations that I can find prohibiting electrified vehicles on any of the park paths, whether paved or unpaved. There is the sign, as I mentioned, in Sunrise, says no motor vehicles, but it's not backed up by anything in the code. And I think that covers it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilcox. Anybody else wishes to make comment on Zoom? Now's the time, again, go ahead and unmute yourself and state your name and city of residence for the record, please. All right, not seeing anybody, anybody in council chambers? All right, I'm gonna go ahead and close public hearing. Any other comments or questions from council? Counselor One?
Just going off of something that Paul said, I interpret the no motorized vehicles as, like, electric bike has a motor in it. Is that what your interpretation of that is also?
That would be my interpretation. I have not had the opportunity to make that interpretation myself directly, but to me, maybe it's the engineer in me, but a motor is a motor, whether it's powered by electricity or?
Yeah, that was my thought, so I don't know if it needs to be specifically laid out or defined in the code somewhere that, you know, that, but that's how my interpretation is. I have an electric bike, so I don't ride it through there because, because it says that? Because I interpret that as a motor, so, Paul, not that I'm trying to answer your question, I just wanted to make sure we're clear on that, because I think that that is dangerous, especially they can't get to, they can go fast, so.
Yeah, something like that, I think we would provide enforcement guidance to our enforcement personnel to make sure they understand what a motorized vehicle constitutes. And, you know, typically, for almost, for most violations, it's gonna be, you know, a knock-it-off warning type situation usually the first time. This, these fines are really for people that are egregious violations or that are not cooperative or, you know, just, you know, somebody just made it on a mistake and didn't realize, oh, I wasn't supposed to do that. And they're probably just gonna say, hey, well, you can't have that in here. Or you need to leash your dog, they'll leash the dog, they're probably not gonna take it any further than that.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Counselor White?
Yeah, and just because it's electric bike, you can, you can use it as a regular pedal bike as well.
Yeah, I know, that, that did occur to me as Counselor One was making his comments. I think that can be a tricky situation for enforcement personnel, of course, you know, when you have something that can be motorized, but, you know, then they get, well, I didn't have the motor turned on, okay, well, yeah, that comes down to the observations of the enforcement officer. Well, you were accelerating and you weren't pedaling, so I'm pretty sure you're using the motor, you know. And, you know, a lot of those things would probably, Ray could probably speak to this better than me, but, you know, there's a difference of opinion on that between the violator and the enforcement staff, and probably the judge is gonna decide.
I think it's something we're probably gonna have to address, because the new ones go, like, 50, I've seen them go like 50 miles an hour in a 25 zone, and there's no lights on them. I'm worried for their safety more than anything else, because it'd be hard to spot one in time. I think there's kind of a hazard, serious hazard associated with them, but that's for another day.
Yeah, the, you know, harkening back to what Paul said, the recollection is, there is a, maybe it's not in the park score, or maybe my memory's flawed, or maybe it's been changed over the years, but my recollection is that there is a prohibition in the code of no motorized vehicles on city-owned public trails. It may not be in the Chapter 13, it may be somewhere else. I'd have to go back and refresh myself on that. But the Chapter 13 also does empower the city staff to post reasonable parks rules. And so if we posted no motorized vehicles, then they're not allowed.
Yeah. Counselor Glance?
Yeah, one of the other things I've seen how this has been addressed in other locations is it's a speed factor where it doesn't matter, I mean, you could be on some of the road bikes out there that go 40, 50 miles an hour by human power, and that still doesn't make them safe. And so they base it on, you know, what they consider a reasonable speed. And there's a difference between going down a hill when your bike is cold and going down a hill when there's other people walking. So I don't know if there's a way to, you know, safe, have something about speed and safety tied into that, other than just motorized.
You know, I'd want to talk to somebody who's, who has a code or a rule like that and find out how they go about enforcing it, because you're certainly correct, especially you go out to a trail like the new 40-mile loop trail, north part of town, you know, long straight stretches where somebody on a road bike that's, you know, accomplished bike rider can get going really fast, and they're mixing with pedestrians and other users, and that's certainly not something we want to see. The difficulty in enforcing that can be, you know, if you say, okay, well, there's a speed limit. You know, I've seen that on trails before. Speed limit five, speed limit 10, well, okay, but now you have to be able to measure the person's speed, and that, you know, having someone out there with a radar gun or something like that can become very difficult. So I'd be curious how, you know, sort of what the approach people take to enforcing a speed rule like that is on a trail, and, you know, how they determine when someone's in violation.
Right, the additional factor is resources for law enforcement. It's hard enough catching up speeding drivers of 3,000, 4,000 pound cars to devote resources to a bicyclist is sometimes hard to justify resources too much in that direction.
I mean, there are things you can, that can be done in terms of, you may not, well, it may be difficult to enforce, that doesn't prevent us from posting, like many of the parks rules, you know, there are people there to enforce them all the time. That doesn't mean we don't post them, because we certainly hope that people will just comply because it's the right thing to do, even if there's someone not there watching them, you know. So even if we don't have an ordinance or enforcement mechanism or, say, a speed, bicycle speed on the trail, doesn't mean we can't post it, you know, and just hope that people comply, or at least hope that most of them will comply. That's better than nothing, right?
Any other comments or questions from council?
Well, I'll just say the, if motorized vehicles are prohibited on the paths in parks, which they are, then electric bikes are prohibited, whether they're pedaling them or not, probably. But certainly, unicycles with the guy all padded up and using pegs to control it, that isn't a pedal, you don't pedal that. So I, anyway, it's not exactly relevant to what we're dealing with here, but it might be something we should look into at some point, make it clear. But it sounds like they're prohibited, it's just a matter of enforcement, and...
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think that's...
We can always look into that.
Depending on what we're, you know, what issue we're talking about, it can be helpful to talk to the enforcement personnel that has spent time out there and find out, you know, how big of a problem is this? You know, I was out there all summer, I saw it twice. Well, how much effort does this council want to go into versus, oh yeah, I see that all the time? Okay, that's probably, okay, that's probably worth some effort.
All right, well, if there's no other discussion, Counselor Glance?
Yeah, one last thing, what about wheelchairs? Wouldn't that be considered a motor, motorized vehicle?
Well, I would have to, I'd have to look into it, I guess, but my presumption would be that they would be exempt under the ADA.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we should probably take that up. I actually enjoy riding my electric bike and going on parks, it has that nice pathway. And I have a trailer, and I put the grandkids in it. But, you know, me, of course, being very safe, especially with the grandkids in the burly trailer. So I think there's probably a way we could come up with a policy that's beneficial for everyone's sake.
Certainly, the electric bikes, the various electric vehicles are becoming much more prevalent, you know? They are. And many of them can be operated just very safely, you know, the people aren't crazy, so. Yeah, there might be a happy medium there, the trick is how do you draw that line? And how do you, how do you define that line when you do need to do enforcement? That's where it gets a little bit dicey sometimes.
All right, I'll move adoption of an ordinance amending Troutdale Municipal Code, Section 13.20.410, establishing fines that may be imposed for violation of Troutdale Municipal Code, Chapter 13.20.
Second. All right, Kendall, when you're ready, please.
Counselor Wittrin?
Yes.
Counselor Glance?
Yes.
Counselor Ripma?
Yes.
Counselor One?
Yes.
Mayor Lauer?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
All right, thank you, sir. Thank you, everybody, appreciate the discussion. Let's move on to agenda item number five, public safety services delivery working group. Ray Young, city manager, continue.
Thank you, Mayor. Last night, the public safety working group met in this very same room for about an hour and 45 minutes. Just to give you a brief recap of what we discussed last night, first of all, regarding fire services and the fire contract. The city of Troutdale, in partnership with the other two cities, Wood Village and Fairview, is conducting a financial economic study on what would be the financial impact to citizens and the general fund if a fire district was voted into being. That report should be done in the middle of October. In terms of compression, we got a kind of a draft oral report about a week and a half ago, and the numbers show that the, if a fire district at 285,000 was covering our citizens, the impact on compression would be de minimis. I think it was approximately 1%, like $70,000 or $80,000 in lost property tax revenues. But if one was created, we would lose $2.7 million in expense from the general fund. So we do expect that report to be favorable in that regard, but it'll also have information on what that means per citizens in terms of taxes to fire their homes, what that would be. So that should be coming middle of October, but that's the preview of it. Second of all, the three cities are also cooperating in a feasibility study for fire, like we did with Portland State back in 2014, is what do they suggest is the best options for Troutdale, Wood Village, and Fairview for fire services? Triton is doing that study, it's being overseen by Wood Village. We had a meeting with them a couple weeks ago, they're getting all of our financial information. They are gonna be putting out in a couple weeks a community survey to get feedback from our community about fire service and what they value, don't value, what they like and don't like about the current service. You should probably be seeing a link for that in about two weeks on our Facebook page and our website, and we'll make some other directed ways to get that out to the people. So part of their study, and they should be done hopefully by the first of November with the feasibility study. So that's going on right now also, and you'll be seeing more about that in the next couple weeks. And then third, we've got some communication from Gresham, woo-hoo. Gresham says their economic study, because they don't have the facts on what compression means to them if they joined a fire district, but they're expected to do a work session on October 15th, and they'll get presented the draft of that study on the economic impact to the citizens of Gresham if there was a fire district and how it'd impact their general fund. So if you're, you know, we can't get any copy of that till after the work session, but if you wanted to watch the work session on October 15th, their Zoom links are on the city Gresham site. They also indicated, based upon the pressure from the three East County cities and from me, so when do we start talking about a new contract, kids? And city manager Schmidt from the city Gresham says, I am working on a letter to the three cities right now to begin that conversation. So we expect in the next week or two to get us a letter about how Gresham wants to approach. And of course, he threw in the line that, you know, based upon what's going over here, we're gonna be really concerned about an equitable share of the cost of the fire service. So it's another way of saying, we're gonna want you guys to pay a lot more. I can read between the lines, so that should be coming the next couple weeks. So that was the update and all the things we talked about, fire last night. On the law enforcement side, after the sheriff made their first salvo of, let's double your costs a month and a half ago, and the public safety working reviewed it, we sent them a whole list of questions, because there's a lot of things they put in that when they calculated their 7.8, 7.9 million dollar number, we have no idea where they came up with them. So we sent them a long email saying, hey, we'd like to have this list of information to help us prepare for responding to you. Tomorrow will be four weeks, don't have it. I did send the captain ASBO an email yesterday, I haven't heard a response. If I don't get a response by the end of tomorrow, I'll probably send an email directly to the sheriff and say, this is not helping matters, and we can't even get a, we're working on it, we're close. So we're booking them on that process. I am gonna be sending them a meeting for the negotiating committee in the next couple weeks, but I'm hoping to get this information before then, so we have some more material to look at to calculate going on that. And I did tell them that Mayor Lauer and myself is working with the other three cities to maybe have a mayor's and city manager meeting in the next couple weeks to talk about strategies for either negotiating together as a group and/or the possibility that we have to conceivably pursue at least a colorable argument that we may start our own three cities police department in competition to whatever bid the sheriff's office gets in. So that's, beginning discussions of that will be coming up. And finally, we'll be meeting again on October 28th, where we hope a lot of this information will be available. So, Mayor, I will direct you to ask Counselor One or Counselor Wittrin if they have anything else to add to our meeting, from our meeting last night.
I will just state that in addition to that, we also asked the entire group to come up with more detailed questions as the negotiating group gets ready to go, go into this, and initially, just to send as many detailed questions as we can to Ray of negotiating points of trying to, I know the sheriff's office hasn't responded yet, but where can we dial in some of our needs or asks? And as we were top lining it last night, there's definitely more controllables, more accountability in the contract, more levers of they're not holding up their end, what can we do? And that's gonna be a lot of, of, I think, where we want to be, have more control over what's happening in our own city. So more details to come, directly to Ray from the group itself.
Yeah, I'll just kind of echo what Jordan said, is that I think it's really important that we are clear in then what we want, how we want that to be accomplished, and that we have clear guidelines in a contract, because they're not there now, of accountability. I think accountability for everybody is important. And like I said, we're, any and all ideas of what you, what we would want from our police. And then we also kind of talked about the idea if we can't get those things and if we can't have a, an equitable contract and something that we feel good about, you know, at what point do we pivot to looking at creating our own and going back to our own police department, and what does that look like? You know, what are our pluses and minuses, pros and cons of doing that? And so I, I think multiple things over the last few weeks in my, just in my own life and in things that really make me pause. and in things that really make me pause about and think hard about what we want, what Troutdale wants, and what's best for us as a whole. So a lot of time and thought and energy has gone into this group, and it's very thoughtful, so.
And then it was, I learned last night that Captain Blevins is coming back, and I want to make sure everybody is aware that that was happening as well.
Yep.
Yeah, he was one of our original, from the Troutdale Police.
Very easy to talk to.
Yeah.
Any comments or questions from council? Council White.
I have a couple of questions. I think, have we gotten anywhere on what would be the level of service accounting would provide if we did have a three-city police department?
Two answers to that question. One is, we don't really know what level they would have provided, because we've had the Troutdale Police Department for as long as we know, so we don't know what level of service they would have provided without Troutdale Police Department here. We did calculate roughly that if you take the overall law enforcement, not the jail budget, but the overall law enforcement of the county, and we divided it per population, the city of Troutdale is already paying one point three to one point four million dollars for the law enforcement services at the sheriff's office. So one argument can be made that, well, whatever number we come up with, we start with a credit of that, because we're already paying for some base level of service, because, you know, they get a patrol district in Savvy's Island, but they don't pay anything extra. They have a resource deputy up in Corbett, they don't pay any extra. So we are entitled to some level of service regardless, because we are paying taxes, business taxes are collected on behalf, et cetera. So that's generally the answer that we've got right now. So we're going to use it generally as a credit against whatever number there is there.
Okay, and then, are we going to start the fire negotiation team soon?
Probably, just waiting for Gresham to tell us what they want, what they're looking at.
That, correct.
Yeah.
And I just want to remind the team here that when we first started this process, because I was on the fire negotiation team, you know, nine years ago, and the best tool we had was a, we have a viable option to do something other than contract with them again, and I think that's the only way you're going to get a fair negotiation, is if we have a Plan A and a Plan B. So it's just, I want to remind everyone of that, because the time's going by awful fast.
Yeah. Is Council Glantz?
Did we ever ask Gresham Police if they would be interested in like a short term while we build our own?
Yes, that was mentioned last night, and we all forgot to mention, we talked about this. I'm going to reach out to Chief Goldberg or the Gresham Police Department and let him know what our FTE numbers we presented to the county and see, it was probably two years ago, they said they'd be interested in giving us a number, their leadership has changed over there since then, but I'll still ask.
Where are we at with finding out the market rate for leasing this building to the sheriff's office?
Well, that was discussed last night, too. You guys, we forgot to tell them that, too. Yeah, that's something that Eric's going to be, Eric Miller's going to be working on to calculate this, because we also talked a lot about, Victoria talked a lot about the amount of money we spend over there for janitorial service and the extra we put over there, the wear and tear on the building, because there are a lot more people in this building than we ever imagined when we had the building originally. So, yeah, that's part of the whole package. It's a separate agreement, there is a lease agreement, and last night I sent the lease agreement to the Public Safety Working Group, so they can look at the lease agreement, because it was not well-written in terms of what happens if we don't up for your services again after July one of two thousand and twenty-five. It wasn't very clear, so they're all going to look through with a fine-tooth comb. So, yeah, that was a discussion last night, it's going to be part of the process to come up with something for that.
So because this is a city building, do we cover or absorb the cost for the utilities as well? Or was that written in the lease that?
I think we pay, I was looking at like Eric, because he's not, I think we pay twenty or twenty-five percent of the utilities, and they pay the rest, because we have this square footage, this square footage for the city attorney and prosecuting attorney and the judge's office over here. So it's provided by square footage.
Okay.
With them, but there's maintenance costs, there's janitorial costs, and if Victoria's pointing out last night, if we have to bring in a contractor to fix something within their insides, we have to have employees follow them around, because the employee is the one who has been cleared to be in the secure areas, and the contractor not necessarily, hasn't necessarily been cleared, so.
Right.
There's a lot of hassle, so that's another issue to talk about.
Lot of dollars.
Any more comments or questions or discussion from council? Council White.
Do you know when we're going to see the results of the survey that the Public Safety Equity Advisory Group is working on?
I have no idea. I know they were taking questions the first Friday this month, but I don't know where they're at with, how many, if they're done collecting that yet.
I'm going to go, if there's no other further comments or questions, I'm going to go ahead and open this up to public comment. If anybody wishes to make comment with regards to agenda item number five, an update from the Public Safety Services Delivery Working Group, now's the time, go on Zoom, if you wish to make comment, go ahead and unmute yourself, state your name and city of residence for the record, please. Are you not seeing anybody? Anybody in council chambers? All right. Public comment is closed. Thank you, Ray. Appreciate it. Let's move on to agenda item number six, staff communications.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Number one, our battery farm, the Best Facility, BES, which is out to the west of Amazon, is going to be completed in a month or two, it is the, one of the two, two hundred megawatt battery storage facilities in the metropolitan area. They are curious if we would like to have some council members take a tour out there. Oh, exciting, all right, great. I will have Erica Palmer, Community Development, she will send you, council, an email saying, all right, let me know who wants to go and we'll arrange it, it's probably middle, end of October. Kendall wants to go, too. So I'll have Erica send an email out, so if there's an interest, great, sounds like we got an interest about touring. It really looks like a big trailer park out there, that's very high-tech. So we'll do that. Number two, I have not heard from any council members that wants to go to the TIP dinner in the middle of October. So if I don't hear something from anybody today who wants to go and take their significant other, I will reach out to the committee chairs and committee members and probably try to roughly do seniority on committee members and see if anybody else wants to go to a free dinner at a casino north of here and Honor Tip, which is a great resource, as you know, to the city. So, great, if I don't hear from any of you by tomorrow, I'll go ahead and open it up to others. You should have gotten an email that on, and number three, you should have gotten an email on that on March tenth, we're having the groundbreaking and ribbon cutting for the.
October tenth.
October tenth, I'm sorry, October tenth at one thirty for the Sandy Waterfront Trail and Park, and then the ribbon cutting for the Chalk Chalk Trail, which goes north of eighty-four, up along, for about three miles, up along the levee over to the Shinnuck Landing. So we're going to do that in cooperation with Metro, Ford Corlin, and ODOT, we're going to be doing that, so on your calendars, October tenth.
What time?
It's got one thirty, one thirty to two thirty, one thirty to three, roughly, on the tenth of October, and we'll be meeting probably on the north side of the RA, going through the mall, around the mall, parking over there. And speaking of the Sandy River Trail, today we had a very large attended pre-contract meeting with Coff Construction, who is doing our project out there. So we had a great meeting with them and our chief engineer and our project manager and their staff, and Bob Coff, owner of the company, showed up, and so they're excited, we're excited. We're starting to gather, getting the permits done, we're almost done with Union Pacific Railroad, a couple more, like tonight, getting those things crossed and setting them in their check, I think it's sixty-eight thousand dollars to get the license to go underneath their bridge. So they're planning at this point, by the time permits and done stop, stuff to start moving dirt November first, and they're saying, yes, we'll be done within ten months, which would be August next year. So everything started off well today with the kickoff meeting, the pre-destruction meeting, so that was going well. And finally, the planning commission is meeting on October ninth, the day after your next council meeting, and the major issue on there is going to be Mike Halsted, who's done a number of developments in town, he's trying to do a development that needs some variances up there by Reynolds High School on two fifty-seventh, they've taken a lot up on the top of the hill. So if you're interested in watching, again, no comments from council during the meeting, but if you're interested in knowing what the variances are, what they're trying to do, you may want to watch in on October ninth. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Agenda item number seven, council communications, Councilor Wittrin, let's start on your end of the table.
Yeah, I'll just say, just from our Public Safety Work, Delivery Working Group, I know, at least for me, things feel like they're moving very slow, but we are all trying, we're all dedicated to do this, and I just want to let the public know that we are trying as fast as we can to get this done, but there's a lot of things in our way to hurry this process up and that are out of our control. So it's definitely though, top of mind for me and trying to make sure we're staying on pace, so being chair of that.
Thank you, sir. Council White.
Oh, sure. I've been talking to some of the people that live on Troutdale Road, and they're really having a problem with, I guess a lot of people are using that as like a bypass to two fifty-seventh, because there's no lights on it, and it's straight as a runway, and I was witnessing it myself, that there's vehicles really just flying through there on that road, so I don't know if we could pass that on to the sheriff.
I did last week.
Okay.
But the new problem came up, sheriff's office time is, everybody who can't cross the Stark Street Bridge is now blowing through downtown Troutdale.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's, I think that's part of the problem.
Nick had to write some tickets, I got him to write some tickets today.
Yeah.
It's, you've noticed it, too.
Yeah, it was really bad by my house.
All those, all those Corbett people, right? They're all going back up to Corbett.
They're used to going fast on the country roads.
Yeah, but I've already told the sheriff's office about Troutdale Road, particularly south of the Charter School there, in that stretch, north of the S-Curve, so, yes, thank you.
And then, I was going to give a plug for TIP, I normally go to that event, and I know the sheriffs really appreciate seeing counselors there, and Troutdale has a big presence there, too. They, they do a lot of, you know, June Vining, you know, is a Troutdale resident, she's in charge of the whole thing, and so I'd be going if it wasn't for the League of Oregon Cities, but it's really a nice event, they give you a nice dinner, and there's like silent auctions, and you can bid on a puppy, that's usually one of the top, top items that people bid against each other on.
To take a puppy home?
Yeah. They have a.
I feel like that's, I feel like PETA would love to hear that.
Yeah, I've seen them go for like three, over three thousand dollars.
Wow, that's surprising.
It's a great cause, it's one of those things you hope you never need, you know, the trauma intervention.
Puppy?
Interventions.
Oh, 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 yeah.
Thanks for clarifying.
Sorry, I, yeah.
Yes, absolutely.
Their service is really an important part for our community, that's all I have.
Council Glantz.
Happy fall. I'm sad it's getting dark so soon.
I love it. I love the fall, fall is my favorite. I'll go really quick. I wanted to say, I wanted to pass along the countless appreciation messages that I have received for you, Councilor Glantz, now that you've stepped down from your committees, from all your fellow committee members and chairs, they wanted to pass along their appreciation for the time you've served on those committees, and hoped that, they were hoping that you would be there to say goodbye, or say thank you, or whatever it was, or let them say thank you to you. So I wanted to pass that along to you, and it's, I don't know what size shoe you wear, but they're big shoes to fill, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. And then, yeah, it is fall time, I love it, I love the cold air, except today, it's ninety, it's stupid, doesn't make sense. So, Council One.
I love the summer, so. I never, never understood why people would like move back and forth between the weather and now I understand, so. I just want to say that I think, as I've gone through this election campaign season, I think that it's amazing and it's pretty awesome that we have so many people interested in participating in our city governments. As I've gotten new, been new to it, I think it's, it's good to have a lot of interest, and I just wanted to say that I think it's, it's good, I think it's indicative of where our city's headed. I want to, on just a personal note, comment on kind of the policing in our, I'm committed to, along with the Public Safety Working Group, but I'm personally committed to making our policing better for all of us. I think that there's multiple issues that have come up, maybe within the last year, because that's what I've noticed, of speeding and just general disregard, I think, for at times people's, just their safety and just being kind and courteous to our neighbors. And so I want to know, I want you to know that I'm committed to that being a backbone of any contract and any accountability that we put in, in anything. So, third, I don't have some new things today. The Stark Street Bridge, I know that it's a concern for a lot of people in our community that want to utilize the highway to come around, the speeding now, the people having to detour through downtown Troutdale, it's going to be a burden on, on us, on our roads. And I have an email out to the correct department in Monmouth County, I don't hear anything in the next couple of days, I'm going to follow up, and I have another person that I can hopefully maybe use to get an answer at least of like what's going on and to kind of get some updates. But each day I go by, my kids, we go to school in Corbett, but at least if we drive by, that, that support system on that side is crumbling every day, and so I don't think it's a, there's going to be a short-term fix anyways, but I'm trying to figure out what's going on with that for people. And then I just want to say that unfortunately, like a lot of, I just think really hard about all of our contracts that we have coming up and all the things and all of our asks. And I, I, you know, these things are going to cost money, and it costs money to have good quality care and commitment and safety, and so I just want people to be aware of, just start to think about where our priorities lie, and I think there's going to be some asks at some, at some point from the city in terms of asking more money from people to have, have these things because of our, the tax rate and where we get our money from. So it's something that I think long and hard about, and those decisions weigh, weigh on the decisions that we as a council and a group make, and think really long and hard about it, so. And that is it.
Awesome, thank you, Council Ripma.
I also, I did notice today, just today, speed enforcement increased for some reason, and mine had something to do with the bridge situation, but along Cherry Park in front of Reynolds High School, so somebody pulled over, of course, it's only twenty along there and easy to speed, but I also saw someone pulled over downtown, and believe me, it's been years since I saw that, so. Troutdale used to be a place where people knew to drive slow, and we got away from that, and I'm pleased to see a little more enforcement. I also agree with Councilor Wan about the democracy we see here in Troutdale and the campaigns and the number of candidates running and, and the issues being debated are good. They're good, and the national divisions we have shouldn't and probably don't affect Troutdale, I hope not, I haven't, haven't noticed that here, and long may it continue. We, we are a model of American democracy, in my opinion, and always have been, as long as I've been involved, and I'm pleased with that. I also, I actually, I missed the end of summer, today was the last gasp probably of it, but happy fall, everyone, and with that, I will move, adjourn.
Second. Oh, not second.
Was there somebody else?
I didn't, I didn't, we got a second.
I have, oh. Glenn, you can't go again.
I have a date on the Stark Street Bridge, I was just going to throw it, I found out that it should be, it should be reopened early December.
Oh, man, you said that on the record.
That's what.
You said that on the record, you should have waited a couple of minutes.
But I, I have heard that it's crumbling further, the foundations are crumbling further, so.
All right, we got a motion and a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We are done, we adjourned, ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thanks, everybody.